Cell phones, would you please put them on silence, please? For the benefit of the meeting. And also, we start the meeting out by saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So could we all stand and do the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible. Will they be ready in the US or all? Thank you, folks. Okay, let's move on. We have eighty minutes of July 1. Are there any additions or good to those minutes as available?
Move on.
Discussion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. We have the discussion approval of the flag.
Move it.
Agreed.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. You have item number four with given resources. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. I will pass that on for signatures.
I'll move on, then.
Agreed.
Well, I can question on the appointed deputy. That's not an increase, is it?
Sure. Sure.
On the county sheriff, that's not an increase, that's just a latter.
It is the latter.
What it is, is just changing his identification from wage plan to appointed deputy.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Move on.
Have you got a motion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Move on. The generally authoritative sign initiation hiring process.
Your second. Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. We have item number five. County treasurer, you see somebody in the report? Treasurer?
Agreed.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Item six, receive commissions of veterans affairs court report.
Move it.
Sure. Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Item seven, receive two statements of undeplegated combination funds now being held by the county sheriff's office.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. We have the approval of a resolution thanking the community county employees for years of service. Move it.
Agreed.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Item nine, social services coordinator, Patty Harris, department. You're gonna use it on that, please? Just for your presentation.
No, just a program.
Hey, Peggy.
What you have before the debate is the process of official beginning of region on July 1. The contracts are technically with the regional government's board. However, we wanted to do back with our individual boards, the regulations of the user to go back to the regional government's board. So this is what we're going to, or we'd like to add as an addendum to the contract for services that we have. Woodbury County has identified as being the important services for Woodbury County. That includes friendship house, medical court, and medications continuing. The overall contract is down about roughly about $300,000 because since the introduction of the Affordable Care Act, we can be able to have people treated that we would normally have paid for. So, but now those funds have to move over and go for their regional services, or services which is for crisis services. So, we have yet to develop those, but this is what we're recommending for the addendum to the supplement contract for services.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Your second.
Send me out. Does Jim wanna maybe speak to it?
Sure. Just a word. Good morning, everyone. Patty and I have talked about how it makes complete sense to us, covers individuals who still be eligible for our kind of services, which is very important to us. Those numbers have gone down dramatically with the expansion of Title 19, but still having ability for their services for non Title 19 people to be covered until they become that. So that's very useful to us and make any more programs that we now have in place is very useful to us. And the way that we serve are very, the disdainful, though he's in my staff is very, he's a fan.
They are.
So it's a good year for all of us and we hope to be able to continue good services. We're happy to work on the expansion in terms of the regional programs and make sure this is here. Some of the good things we've done with very, with surrounding counties should be a good experience. See something more finely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Thank you.
If I could just take a second.
Yes, you can.
Thank the board and building services because building services have done a wonderful job in helping us move out from the location.
That's great.
We should be ready by next Tuesday to have y'all come out, but they have been absolutely fantastic to work with and I really appreciate what they've done for us.
Wonderful.
We've finally got our cop machine that was our last day to hook up. So everything's good.
Good. All right. Thank you, Peggy. Very good. Item number ten, you have the architect Regina, is she's, is she here? Good morning. Are you occupied out there, Regina?
A little bit, sir.
Amazing.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The reason I'm here today is to make a recommendation on the bids that were taken two weeks ago for the CCTV recording modifications and camera additions. And the low bidder was ECI Systems and we are recommending the low bidder on this project.
Move it. Second. Alright, discussion. What are we getting here?
Yeah, what are we gonna get?
Okay. We're proposing that both option A and option B are accepted. Option A is an upgrade to the storage system. Currently, there's a thirty day storage system in place and this is an upgrade to a two-year storage system.
That's exactly what Brad was.
Yeah, George, that's exactly what we needed, two-year pretensions to save us some future litigation.
You betcha. What would that cost us? Yeah, I watched it before.
The low bid on that was $100,796.98. And then also there is option B. And option B is an addition of twenty-five cameras in some high liability areas in the booking cells, whoops, I'm sorry. In the booking cell areas of the jail in a variety of locations. And that will be integrated into the current system that is there now. And that's option B and that amount was for $80,020.10.
How much, three thousand?
Eighty, eighty thousand.
Oh, eighty thousand.
Yep, eighty thousand, twenty dollars. We asked them to combine these numbers and give us a total and include a $5,000 allowance for unforeseen circumstances. So this contractor for the total of those two options gave us a number of $185,817.
And you guys have enough money left to do this?
Right.
Good.
It has been verified that there is availability in the budget to complete this project.
Now, those, that option there takes care of all the blind spots and whatever in the jail that needs, needed observation.
Right, it does help us in those areas. There was additional down the road, but because we're still in our bigger areas lacking something, this is a great start.
And how many cameras were, did we get for that $80,000?
That was twenty-five additional cameras.
You're buying additional cameras.
And it is in the highest priority area.
These are high definition cameras.
Right.
Mark and I were on that committee and was, I think everybody's very pleased that we got everything we needed.
Yes.
That is good. Do you want to speak? Now, the, I don't think so. You're standing up. Now, the total bid is what, 185 what? And you say that we have enough money in the budget to take care of it and go over the budget?
Yes, and that has been verified that there is sufficient budget.
Any further discussion? That's a long road down to get to the point where we're at right now, ladies and gentlemen, so I'm glad we're there.
I'd like to thank everybody that worked to get to this point.
You're welcome. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it, man. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Okay, how soon will they get installed now? I mean, once we get this budget?
As soon as, because I have your approval today, I will write up the contract documents. And those documents, as soon as they are reviewed by your team and signed, we can get the signature for the contractor and that work can begin after the contracts are signed.
Great, great. You think it'll begin by, begin by August, September, whatever? Is it, is it a lengthy process?
We are in an existing condition and so we've asked that the contractor complete the work. Just a moment, I have that date right here. I believe it's the end of October we've asked them to be finished by. Yeah, October 31st is the date we've asked them to complete by.
Alright, alright. Alright, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item, I think we're a little ahead of schedule here. Item, item eleven is a time set area for selling of a property. And I think we have about two to three minutes to go on. Item one, I have a thinking thing to say, it's still scheduled for two to three minutes.
The juvenile detention report, you know, is still very good, we're still receiving income.
Right, right.
Yeah, we have to set it at a certain time and we'll let you know. Okay?
Yeah, juvenile detention report, the letter says it's still very good, it's down. And I think it's gonna continue that way. We also have a situation too where Mars Olson is looking at renewing contracts with existing contractors, the BIA and also the Philpenny. And he's negotiating with those, with those programs to, you know, to get them back into the juvenile detention center that now relieves some of the expense of the program, but also designates, identifies too that, you know, we're not filling our detention centers with our, with our own local kids, that we're doing other things in the community to keep them out of the detention center, so that's really important. I just hope we're not too liberal with that kind of a situation, but we'll see. I think it's now 10:15, we'll move on to item 11, which is a public hearing sale of property. This piece of property is 005430, it's located at 205 Market Street. Is there anyone in the audience that would protest for the sale of this piece of property? Public hearing, no. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing on that piece of property.
I'm willing to close the hearing.
Now, I would open it for anyone that's in the audience to bid on 205 Market Street. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Those who favor, if you close the hearing, didn't get to say aye?
Aye.
Alright, those opposed, say aye. Now, I will open up the bidding for the 205 Market Street. Give your name, please, and the amount of money that you're bidding.
Gavin Hay, 409.
You're bidding 409?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that might have been on the hearing? Give your name, please, and the amount that you're bidding.
Now you have a move on?
Ma'am, you'll have to wait until the second option, okay? You're on the wrong one.
One more to go. Mr. Chairman, here you know the bidders, I believe that they did be ordered to David Hay.
Okay. Those who favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Now, we have the public hearing on the sale of property of 077970 located at 2205 Court Street. Is there anyone in the audience that would protest the sale of this piece of property? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Agreed.
Now, those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Now, the hearing is now open to, for bids on this piece of property. You have your hand up to bid, Mr. Corey?
Yes, $600.
Mr. Corey, you bid $600. Is there anyone else in the audience to bid? Ma'am, just give your name and...
I have a call.
Okay.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred? Any further bids? Mr. Corey?
This is residential lot, right?
Correct.
Okay. Not commercial.
Correct.
About fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. Any other bids?
Two thousand.
How much?
Two thousand.
Two thousand? Any other bids?
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred?
Thirty-two hundred? Okay.
Thirty-two hundred, thirty-five hundred.
Okay. He's up to thirty-five hundred. Ma'am, you want to bid further?
Three, three seven.
Three seven hundred?
Four thousand.
Four, four three hundred.
Forty-three hundred?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-seven.
Five thousand.
Five fifty.
What was it, five?
Five fifty?
Fifty-five hundred or five thousand?
Is it fifty-five hundred, ma'am, or five thousand, fifty dollars?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred? Just pick one.
Fifty-six hundred.
Three seven. Fifty-nine. Six fifty.
Sixty-five hundred?
Well, come on, we blow our taxes.
Just so you understand, she's buying in the main parking lot that's next door to a house in Iowa and she thinks she can turn into the parking lot without leaving a bumper area and she can't.
Well, we're not here to...
I know you're not here to hear that.
We're determined. I'm sorry. Do you?
I'm not gonna bid anymore.
And your bid, what your last bid, ma'am, was how much?
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Your option?
Yes, thank you.
I move we accept the bid of, you're gonna have to spell your last name for me.
And you will get home.
It's right in here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Okay, you bought yourself a piece of property. Alright. Thank you, folks. Let's move on to item number twelve.
Sorry.
Second, there you go.
First item I have is the award of two motor graders. I recommend award of the motor graders to Murphy Tractor for two six-wheel drive motor graders. Trying to find my pop sheet I had here a minute ago. Both of them recommended with trade. One headed for auto at a net purchase price for the machine of $223,926.
Is there a second?
Move on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Second one, I recommend award to Murphy Tractor. This is for mobile. Net purchase price with trade, $220,926.
Move it.
Agreed.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Second item is to consider the order of locations for a truck mounted hydraulic excavator. We only have one bidder on this, $376,000 for the machine. I'm recommending we reject all bids and we will look at a different class of machine or a replacement of our current excavator.
Okay. They're motion to reject those bids. Move to reject. Is there a second?
Agreed.
Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
What we're gonna be looking at is a rubber tire excavator. Looks very much like a track backhoe except it is on a rubber tire frame. We've tested one of these from John Deere. It's a John Deere 190 excavator. We're also wanting to look at the 220, which is the next size, class, bigger. Prior to making a decision, we'll be going out for quotes at some time in the not-too-distant future looking at that.
Are they, are they a little cheaper, a piece of equipment?
We can almost buy two.
Is that right?
Price of one. Not quite, but it's, it's close. Lynn County recently took quotations on this machine and they came in between $206,000 and $217,000. Now, I'm not sure of spec exactly the way we spec ours. We're looking probably at a different style of bucket. We'll make sure it has the wrist which allows the multiple positioning of the bucket for digging ditches and doing other work out there. But we have testing machines, they have adequate reach, they're not quite as strong as a track mounted machine. The track mounted machine has much stiffer underbody. These, these other tire mounted machines move much slower than the Grail did, but with potential buying two and then putting them out there in territories, we could still cover the area. And long-term, we were looking at a fourth excavator anyway. It always seems like we have one crew waiting to build driveways for someone. We think this will allow us to improve our service in the country and have better uptime with, with machines. So again, we're recommending, as I said, we'll come back for a new set of bids, new specifications for a different style of machine.
Okay, and number D, letting of payment markings.
I think C first is obviously approval of contract and bond for Dixon, this is for the Bronson Bridge. They ran into some delays, we'll be coming to you with that next Tuesday, so I'd like to request that that be table for today.
Okay. Is the motion table?
Motion to table.
Sure. Discussion. Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Now, we have the set time bids for payment markings. Our first bid is from Iowa Plains Signing. Iowa Plains Signing out of Waterloo. They did include proposal guarantee and bid bond. Total bid price, $63,869. Six-three, eight-six-nine.
Are they the only bidder?
No, we have a second bid.
Oh, you have a second bid.
We did send this out statewide, also advertised on the DOT lighting bulletin. Our second bid is from Vogel Traffic Services, Orange City, Iowa. Their total bid is $50,303.10. You need to look at those? I don't think so. I recommend award of the bid to Vogel Traffic Services.
Move it.
Agreed.
Any motion and second? Any further discussion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
With only four bid items, you can take a look pretty quickly and see the difference on every, on every single one of the items, so.
Alright. Anything else? You're welcome.
We, we have gone through preliminary assessments with Federal Highway Administration and FEMA on our flood damage. Our, we have heard nothing yet from either agency as to whether or not any funds will be awarded. At this point in time, we're under governor's proclamation which frees us up for state aid with barricades, snowbents, items that the state might be able to supplement our courses with if needed. You know, at this point, we don't have those needs and we're just in a holding pattern until we get back. With federal highway, we just submit one project. Since we have thirty-eight projects that are roadside slides, they take a look at that one as a sample and they'll make a determination based on that one, so wait until you're back on.
Okay. Thank you. Is Mr. Gross here?
He's right here behind us, so.
Morning.
Well, today we wanted to have a follow-up in regard to the informal hearing that we had on June 4th on the Orton Slope, trying to get a little direction from the board as to how you want to proceed. You know, there's definitely interest by the landowners of, at proceeding to the point of a formal hearing where the engineer's report would be presented and that the landowners then in the Orton Slope would have the opportunity to basically consider the improvement. And if there is a majority of the landowners that would be opposed to the improvement, they would have the right of remonstrance at that informal hearing. In the informal process, what you were accomplishing was to get input from the landowners, the judge if there was support of moving forward. And I guess I'm here today to basically address any questions or concerns that the board has in regard to the process and if there was any concerns that came out of that informal hearing process that you would like to address.
Just for the board's information, we did try to get some aerial photos of the flooding that's present there now. That should be done this week. We're getting some assistance from the Iowa Highway Patrol, actually. And we're hoping that those photos, where maybe they'll be available next week, at least in time for the formal hearing. So Gary Brown was able to set us up with that and yesterday was a bad day to be airborne, forgetting most kind of photos. We're anticipating that they'll be coming here later this week.
Now, we do have to have another formal hearing.
Well, I, I believe we do and the reason I say that is because our drainage engineer did find... Well, I, I believe we do and, and the reason I say that is because our drainage engineer did find the theory was deficient in capacity compared to current drainage standards. So, uh, I, I think formal hearing is, is incumbent upon you now. I think what, what's needed as much as anything is that, um, he has to prepare a final report. And, uh, we have tried to look at the options that were, were requested and brought up during the hearing. Uh, there was discussion to, uh, um, taking the water over to New Lake, which is on property owned by Mid-American, uh, they preferred, they, they stated that they did not want that water when they approved their operations. Um, we've looked at, uh, an option that I shared with you last week of taking the water around the Browns Lake outlet. Um, that was at an additional cost of about seven hundred thirty thousand dollars to basically bypass the lake with the water coming from the Orton Slope. Um, just extrapolating, like, yeah, looking at coming in on the west edge at the north end of the DNR property on the west side, you're probably looking in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand to take it in that way, which would put that water near the outlet that Mid-American currently uses from their north power plants with their cooling water. Um, that would put it into an area that is of lesser concern. It's a shallower area of the lake, which would also be a potential option, although, uh, a, uh, a cost wasn't prepared on that, but by extrapolation, you can kind of see where, where that would come in now. I am keen today to, uh, you know, again, address your questions, uh, to see which option you guys feel more comfortable with. Um, we had, I had in my notice at least six people who spoke up in favor of the open ditch option. And, uh, I even can explain some of the, uh, preferences for, or some of the advantages of that better than I can. We had one who spoke up for the sixty-inch tile. Um, that was a much more costly option for the district. Um, I think I even prepared some options for sediment and soil loss control out there that can be incorporated within the project, even though we weren't successful in getting the, uh, watershed improvement review board in. So, I guess, uh...
I think the other option too that was brought up during that discussion, Mark, was that, uh, clean out of, uh, existing, uh, uh, tubes down there that are currently, uh, not really plugged, but they, they do have sediment in them. And also cleaning out the, uh, drainage areas like trees that was, uh, blocking the, you know, the flow of that, of the thing. Just, uh, that is another option that was, uh, basically talked about. If you, you just leave, basically, uh, do those, those areas, it would be cheaper than what we're talking about right now with the two options, or three options that you just brought up.
Our, our examination of the area out there in our survey that was done on that area is that from the railroad to the main intake for the Orton Slope tile, uh, there really aren't the type of blocks out there that we're concerned about. We can knock down some of the trees that are on the border of the ditch, but they're really not interfering with the, well, it, it's running as fast as it could run. And we're, we're trying to, uh, put twenty-seven hundred acres of drainage through a twenty-inch pipe. Um, the, we have gone out and taken water samples at the outlet. We observed that the outlet is working fully. We observed that the inlet's working fully. It will not surprise me to see that we have some areas where the tile has failed. And in those cases, you know, basically it will create that sinkhole that we see around a, a flowing conduit when, when there's a failure in the intake or any of those pipe sections. We'll be able to replace those, but that isn't going to improve the capacity at this point. We've had seventeen inches of rain almost on that watershed that would last three weeks. And where the design flow and, and I even can address that better, probably is about half inch per twenty-four hours.
Right. That's where you would like to have the outlet capacity to take a half an inch per twenty-four hours off of that watershed, um, for every acre in the watershed. And right now, you have one-tenth of that capacity. So, it takes basically ten times as long to basically provide drainage to those lands. This has been ever since nineteen twelve when the facility was established. It's got a twenty-four inch outlet for two thousand plus acres of water, um, you know, draining down through there. So, uh, we know that the capacity is inadequate. Um, landowners seem, uh, at the, what started this project was an informal get-together of the landowners that basically wanted something done about their outlet. Um, the, the preliminary, eh, options that we've looked at is to show people that if we try to keep this in a closed conduit underground, that you, it's very costly to do such to get it up to that half-inch coefficient. You can provide it cheaper with an open ditch system and also the open ditch system gives you the advantage of having storm capacity above that half-inch. Um, there are things already in that watershed that help address some of the water quality concerns. There's an existing CRP, um, parcel of ground there at the inlet of the current, uh, uh, tile system. What we would be able to do in the open ditch system is enhance any detention, natural detention that we have at that CRP parcel to try to get additional sediment removals and the ore outlets into the open ditch system.
So, in other words, what you're saying, I didn't say that we're enhancing that by, by increasing the, uh, it would be more of a enhancement of, uh, oh, not open ditch, but, uh, wetlands.
In a sense, yes. It, that would allow the water to temporarily pool there and then drain off over time. It's similar to what's occurring right now, but the problem is it's standing for weeks, huh, you know, you have two-plus weeks of water standing out there. Nobody upstream is able to get their water discharged properly because that, that detention area is sitting there completely full. But, um, you know, then down the ditch, open ditch system, we would use sediment traps additionally to help settle out sediment down the system. We wish to, you know, the board took the initiative to, uh, apply for a water improvement, um, grant and that wasn't successful because the, the board is saying that you need to apply on an overall watershed basis. And, you know, the Orton Slope only makes up about one-third of the overall watershed that drains into Browns Lake. That's gonna take a concentrated effort locally, you know, to bring together organizations and stuff if they want to be able to proceed down that.
You would have to put tubes under the interstate?
Tubes will be, uh, uh, there will be additional culvert that, uh, culverts that will go through the interstate and also through the, uh, the cement road.
With, with the open ditch concept?
With the open ditch concept.
Any way you go, you'll have those.
You have to do the same with the new, uh, um, if you're doing a new tile, you would have to do the same thing.
And when you, uh, are at the, how much area in Browns Lake, how many foot ditches do you?
Oh, up to the lake, we will be pushing in the neighborhood of about ten foot deep. And, but, the open ditch will not directly outlet as an, uh, open ditch into the lake. There will be a culvert at the outlet of this ditch system that will discharge to the lake.
Which would trap more sediment?
Which will help trap more sediment. Uh, basically, the ditch will provide some also additional retention. The culvert will basically be sized for that half-inch drainage coefficient. Bigger storm events basically fill the ditch up and slow down before they go out that, you know, culvert into the lake.
That'd be really important because that's one of the, uh, things on both sides. I mean, the residents on Browns Lake and also the landowners, the farmers was concerned about runoff into Browns Lake. So, we want to somehow protect that as much as we can.
That's correct. And that, and, you know, the, we feel that there is about ninety thousand dollars of work for water quality purposes that the landowners in the district are gonna be willing to absorb as part of this project. Enhancements beyond that point that we were trying to get through the work grant would be up to another three hundred thousand, well, another two hundred thousand dollars of improvements there. That, um, you know, we don't think the landowners in the, that given watershed are gonna support paying for those type of measures beyond buying the land that CRP is currently on, uh, you know, those type of costs. The landowners, I don't think should be expected to have, have those costs up. So, uh, you know, what we are recommending is to move forward and we need the board's direction to go ahead and move forward with a formal report and have the formal hearing. And again, uh, the landowners there have that right of remonstrance, uh, which is fifty percent of the landowners' control and seventy percent of the land can object to the project and stop the project from moving forward. And that process, you know, would play out at the formal hearing, through the formal hearing process.
I've got several questions.
Sure.
The open ditch, how many acres of ground is that gonna take out of production?
Um, the, we had about ten point seven and then with the extension along, um, the interstate up to Barker Avenue, or Barker.
Circle.
Avenue. Um, that would be about five point four more. So, we would be taking in the neighborhood of sixteen point one acres.
Now, is that for the entire amount of the excavation, the, you've got the size of the slopes and everything else?
There, there would be an additional, um, easement for access for maintenance and upkeep that it remains farmable. That material is spread in topsoil so that the land adjacent to the open ditch would remain farmable. Um, and that would be an additional, uh, six, just, just short of five acres.
How about twenty-some acres?
Uh, with that five acres, that would be correct.
Except that five acres, we're not gonna own that. We just have an easement.
You just have an easement. The inside of the open ditch, theoretically, you know, you're paying land, going land value for that because it's taken completely out of production from that land. And then, you know, a portion of this right away also currently would be in areas that we tried to maintain along property lines so we're not basically having point roll issues and that type of thing, you know, disrupting in a sense the direction of farming on that.
Another question. The, the culvert discharging into Browns Lake?
Correct.
Is that gonna be higher or lower or the same depth as the drainage ditch?
It would be the same depth as the, um, design flow line of the drainage ditch. There would however be traps, um, that are below the grade of the normal flow, um, up through that lower stretch of the open ditch that would be formed by placing riprap barriers, uh, spacing up the ditch. So that sediment, the low flow basically allows the sediment to drop into these traps which would have to be cleaned out on a more regular basis. Probably every five years, you would basically remove sediment out of the trap areas.
So, these trap areas would be featured in the plan?
That, that, we already, um, have.
In the open ditch?
In the, or we would be designing in the open ditch.
Okay, yes.
Are you going to have stagnant water back how far?
Uh, stagnant water, it would not, we use riprap to make these, uh, trap barriers so that the low-flow water can actually, uh, seep through the rock and continue on down the ditch system. So, basically, they will dry up over time. If.
Over time is not, you know, what, what is that time?
Well, um, you know, between storm event, between storm events, basically, it could, um, you know, that water could seep down in a matter of a couple of days. But if we had continuous storm events, you know, that, it's possible that water would not be completely drained out of there uh, in between storm events. But the, uh, these traps are only shallow. They're only basically in the neighborhood of eighteen inches deep. And you just have a series of those up the open ditch. And again, they're just to try to get the sediment, as much sediment to drop out of the water before it goes into Browns Lake.
Yeah, they are no curvy as water will trick through and.
I've got, I've got a problem with this ditch, that's my own thoughts.
Okay.
I, I understand the tiles move a lot quicker.
The.
It would get, you know, it'd go through a tile faster than the open ditch, I'm sure.
Hey, that would be true, um, you know, a, uh, a concrete, um, pipe is gonna have, it'd be smoother and the water velocities down through the pipe would be faster. Now, the one thing by removing, using the open ditch too and the in, new intake system that we would use at the, uh, inlet or the current inlet to the tile system is, we would be removing that tile so that the water has to basically first go through the vegetation and come through a riser and then we would use a subsurface, um, uh, basically like a subsurface, uh, tile, pattern tile in that CRP to draw down the shallow water and take that down. So what we're forcing again is trying to get some detention out of that CRP. Currently, the culvert that comes into that CRP area right now is lower, about three foot lower than the surrounding ground around it. So, anything that flows into that CRP right now is trying to get down to that low elevation to get out of it. So, if we got any sediment moving down the current ditch system coming into that CRP, it's basically just going straight down the pipe and going to Browns Lake. So, this, this here will help in a sense try to get additional sediment removal in that CRP area.
So, it's additional filtration system, actually?
Correct.
Which is good.
Did you, um, have the, are you finished, sorry?
I got, I just wondering if we talk about a clean out every five years, let's say. What is a clean out, right?
Um, ballpark figure. You, in these areas, you'd be looking at probably, well, if, well, I would guess that you'd be talking maybe in the neighborhood of each of the sediments doing that trap about two-day deal with an excavator, so you'd maybe be looking at.
Two hundred dollars an hour is what we pay for an excavator during flood to come in and assist us. So, two days, sixteen hours, you're looking at about thirty-two hundred dollars every five, six years. Just ballpark.
That's good.
Did you have the results of the water samples that you took?
We just got them. I wanna get them in a table, we're gonna, I'll bring them next week. Um, what I can tell you is that, you know, the, the water in, in place where we took the samples were, um, right at the railroad and near the intake. Um, there was more sediment load, that's measured by turbidity, than would normally be seen in, uh, the lake at any given time. Um, we compared the background value of the lake. The lake leans a little, uh, pH of about six point three, as I recall, our pH was about eight point three in the water we collect. Um, you know, that, as expected, there was a bit of a trace of, of phosphates and nitrates that were slightly higher than what's there in the background in the lake. Um, that would be anticipated when you got runoff kind of from the ground. I will bring that in along with, uh, um, information on what's actually, um, been monitored in the lake in the past. We tried to look at, I think, those six parameters that we grabbed. They were off of the, uh, uh, parameters that DNR posts on its, uh, website for, to the Public Waters of Iowa.
But we could assume once it drains at more rapid rate that those levels would be high as well.
Well, again, we're, we're trying to.
Even with all the measures.
Yes, uh, you know, currently, that agricultural runoff is hitting to the lake, but it's getting there at a slower rate. Um, you know, we're trying to build in some basically sediment removal which is going to be addressing the turbidity and trying to, any phosphorus that's attached to the soil particles basically would be trying. basically would be trying to be settled out. Um, you know, the chemical herbicide, that type of thing, um, you know, what you're gonna expect in an open ditch delivery system or what you're gonna expect in a subsurface tile of delivery system, there isn't gonna be significant difference there between herbicide and nutrient type delivery that's gonna go down that system. Sediment is potentially more prevalent that come down the ditch system. That's why we're building some of these trap systems in is to address sediment.
Right. And does your report not have all three options? You don't, even though you presented those, you, you're looking not to do that in your report?
We would address, we would address those options in the report, but we would actually show preliminary plans for the open ditch system being the cheaper alternative and basically providing the, uh, larger capacity, you know, for storm, storm management out there um, through the open ditch. Those would be what we would include as the preliminary plans, but we would definitely show basically the cost estimates that we've already prepared and have that discussion in the, in the formal report.
Yeah, one, one thing I might mention in, in discussing water quality, if you had the opportunity to go out and look at the farmers and the garrets and ditches and the way they were carrying water, that stuff looked like chocolate milk at itself. Um, the water that's coming in through this system is, especially when you saw in that first couple of days when there was still clear rainwater runoff, looked more milky. It's lighter in color. If we had grabbed a sample from one of our agricultural drainage ditches, I think we would have seen much higher levels of turbidity, much higher phosphorus, much higher nitrogen than what is present in the background here. It's, it's, I think the open ditch gives us a better chance of getting rid of some of that uh, as, as we're capturing it in vegetation, we're capturing the shallow runoff in a tile. Um, you know, most tile water when it comes out, when it's had the chance to filter through the soil, so it's pretty good. Now, with the intake we've got now, we're not getting that same soil filtering. Uh, we've just got, we're not getting with that intake yet.
I have one more question. Is the two-stage ditch, is that ninety thousand? Is that, or is that the seven thirty-four in this last? If you're gonna route it farther or you're going, I'm just trying to understand. But if, we would like to discuss a two-stage ditch for the lower sediment option three.
Okay, we, one of the other options which would take more ground in the open ditch would be to generate a two-stage ditch where you try to use the shallow water stays in a about a two-foot, three-foot deep ditch, which is again narrow, four-foot bottom. And then you come up and you get a wider ditch, two feet up and it goes wider. And you try to put vegetation along that. And that would be another option instead of using the trap system that we were using. And a two-stage ditch would be another option that we could discuss in our report as another option to be like that.
Which is more fair?
Um, truthfully, they're probably pretty equivalent to each other. And, uh, you know, the, if the landowners, if we have landowners that were taking ground from that are opposed to losing any additional ground, I would stay, staying with uh, rock traps at the bottom of the ditch would be more preferable to that given landowner than doing the two-stage ditch.
Right. Is there, at the meetings, uh, there's a lot of talk about, uh, bringing soil conservation in the various agencies? Has that been done?
Um, you know, currently, I mean, we've had discussions with the NRCS and the local who are with, partnered with your local con, uh, soil and water conservation district. We've asked them about the watershed, about conservation in the watershed. That again is a individual landowner has to sign up with the local soil and water conservation district. We asked them about what's the typical soil loss in this watershed. This being a very flat watershed, you know, there are allowable soil losses, they refer to. They basically said the majority of this watershed is within allowable soil loss figures. That basically means there's enough residue being generated back to the, the ground, the soil, um, to replenish itself back. They do not, you know, in regard to other water quality aspects be brought in and working in partnership between the district and the soil and water conservation district, that would have to take a local organization. It would have to bring in all the lands around Brown's Lake and trying to get the, uh, soil and water conservation district to join in on that. There could be possibilities of, of a special watershed dollars being spent towards that type of, you know, if you could get the group put together. But, uh, you know, the Orton Slough itself, um, individually working, the landowners need to work individually with the soil and water conservation district for buffer strips, those type of practices. And that's built in through their conservation plans. If they need it to stay eligible under the, uh, farm bill for basically benefits under the farm bill, they have to basically comply with their conservation plan. But typically, this watershed is so flat that there is very little that these farmers have to do besides basically tillage, um, letting, you know, making sure they have residue on the ground from tillage operations. And that's about all they have to do to meet their conservation plans.
Any other questions, concerns? They're pretty thorough here. So now we have to set, uh, well.
He's sent his final report to you, George, and then, then the board would go ahead and say.
When, when do you think that you'd find a report? Come back to us later.
We could, uh, uh, plan about sixty days.
Sixty days, okay.
And what, what we really need today would be is the board's basically authorization received to that, uh, filing the formal engineer's report. And then as we file that, we would set the hearing date for that hearing.
Okay, Claire.
Is it, is doing this study at this, he's doing a study.
I don't know, Craig just is, uh, is included in his comprehensive study, but.
It is somewhat, I don't know to this degree, but it brings up a point of, um, I realize you have to finish your report and I think you hopefully have some direction to do that, but it seems like there's just so many areas that need to be looked at.
Brought together, yeah.
Brought together that has not yet. So I think your report is one of those to bring together. I mean, we just have to mesh it with a lot of different entities.
Now, there's no real good answer here. I understand getting the water off. I guess we just proceed until we find the, uh, make a determination or determine how to do anything. Formal hearing will give us a better idea too, if, if the board remembers that.
If I can add at this time, it seems like the use of the land is agricultural.
Correct.
And, and that's what this drainage study is focusing on is the continued agricultural use of the land. As this land might tradition, or transition to other uses, at that point in time, your, your conditions become very different. And the things that you'll have to look at are very different as well. Because you'll be looking at, at storm water management as opposed to agricultural drainage. They sound a lot alike, but the one is trying to keep ground tillable. The other is trying to capture storm water and not have changes in the flood characteristics of land essentially. So, um, they're similar, but.
Two are related.
Yeah, we can't really have, yeah, we, I mean, we know that we're in a special situation down there because, uh, we are in South as far as any kind of commercial development is concerned. So, I mean, those considerations are gonna have to somehow be integrated, uh, with, uh, with what we build. We're, we're looking at this from a, a traditional standpoint, but because of the geographical area we're relocated now, I don't think that we can, we can, we can bind ourselves to those, to that, to, to that limit, to those kinds of thinking anymore, particularly in that area.
That's one of the reasons the open ditch option actually lends itself better for long-term for storm management out in that watershed. If there's development along the interstate interchange there, um, and as things progress, that open ditch system actually provides a better outlet system for storm water management.
Well, what I'd like to do is have you visit with, uh, the clerk group that we hired to do that companies study down in that area. And, uh, so that he is aware, the company's aware of what, uh, we're going to have to do. I mean, it's something that we just can't, you know, put on the shelf once the study is done because we're gonna have to do something. And that, that area is continually gonna be, uh, uh, most of it's gonna stay agricultural, but also we're gonna have some, some commercial development, uh, in that specific area to a certain degree. Uh, two, uh, along with railroad, uh, uh, transitions and getting under Interstate twenty-nine and all of that. All that's gotta be, uh, part of, I think, uh, this, this, this study in a way taking our time and, and, and doing what we think needs to be done in collaboration with, uh, with the landowners down there. You know, so we.
I think that'd be an excellent idea for us to visit with.
Good.
So, would you like us to, or would you like me to? So, maybe.
I, I would, I would, Mark, if it's, it's gonna have to be in.
You still need the report.
So, I, my recommendation is go ahead, we have to continue with it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, bring in all the components so that we know when we set down that formal meeting, uh, with the landowners, with the folks that are certainly, uh, a part of it, stakeholders in, in, in Brown's Lake and we have every component of this covered as he, he can possibly cover. That'd be my recommendation.
I'm good.
Okay.
That's the consensus, we'll see what we make happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good report.
Thanks.
I get to the last.
Um, anything else? Um, item fourteen is, uh, giving a meeting individual or group push day presentation on the agenda.
See you next.
See you next.
Motion to recess.
Okay, we'll recess, uh, for about five minutes and then we have, uh, interviews coming up at, uh, about ten minutes after.
Not too bad. Sheriff. There's a lot of, and. I know, I sure isn't. It's gonna make the big bucks there. You know, because you don't wanna screw it up.